Hereby call to order the Santa Fe County Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, May 20th, 2021. Can I have a roll call, please?
Charlie Gonzalez.
Here.
Frank Katz.
Here.
J.J. Gonzalez.
Here.
Libra Lopez.
Here.
Steve Krenz.
Here.
Ria Serna.
Here.
Susan Martin.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, approval of agenda? Any amendments or table to withdraw items, Vicky?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
This is Frank. I move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay.
I abstain.
Okay. Uh, let's go to, uh, old business. Uh, A 20-50-80 John Stanton variances. Please, uh, who's gonna present on that?
Mario Madrid, the engineer on the project.
I mean the staff.
Mr. Chair, it's John Lovato. He's having some technical difficulties, so I think he was just trying to call in now. Um, if we can just give him a minute here, he should be on.
Sure. Hereby call to order the Santa Fe County Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, May 20th, 2021. Can I have a roll call, please?
Charlie Gonzalez.
Here.
Frank Katz.
Here.
J.J. Gonzalez.
Here.
Libra Lopez.
Here.
Steve Krenz.
Here.
Ria Serna.
Here.
Susan Martin.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, approval of agenda? Any amendments or table to withdraw items, Vicky?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
I abstain.
Okay. Uh, let's go to, uh, old business. Uh, A 20-50-80 John Stanton variances. Please, uh, who's gonna present on that?
Mario Madrid, the engineer on the project.
I mean the staff.
Mr. Chair, it's John Lovato. He's having some technical difficulties, so I think he was just trying to call in now. Um, if we can just give him a minute here, he should be on.
Sure. Hereby call to order the Santa Fe County Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, May 20th, 2021. Can I have a roll call, please?
Charlie Gonzalez.
Here.
Frank Katz.
Here.
J.J. Gonzalez.
Here.
Libra Lopez.
Here.
Steve Krenz.
Here.
Ria Serna.
Here.
Susan Martin.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, approval of agenda? Any amendments or table to withdraw items, Vicky?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay.
I abstain.
Okay. Uh, let's go to, uh, old business. Uh, A 20-50-80 John Stanton variances. Please, uh, who's gonna present on that?
Mario Madrid, the engineer on the project.
I mean the staff.
Mr. Chair, it's John Lovato. He's having some technical difficulties, so I think he was just trying to call in now. Um, if we can just give him a minute here, he should be on.
Sure. Hereby call to order the Santa Fe County Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, May 20th, 2021. Can I have a roll call, please?
Charlie Gonzalez.
Here.
Frank Katz.
Here.
J.J. Gonzalez.
Here.
Libra Lopez.
Here.
Steve Krenz.
Here.
Ria Serna.
Here.
Susan Martin.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, approval of agenda? Any amendments or table to withdraw items, Vicky?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's go to, uh, old business. Uh, A 20-50-80 John Stanton variances. Please, uh, who's gonna present on that?
Mario Madrid, the engineer on the project.
I mean the staff.
Mr. Chair, it's John Lovato. He's having some technical difficulties, so I think he was just trying to call in now. Um, if we can just give him a minute here, he should be on.
Sure. Hereby call to order the Santa Fe County Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, May 20th, 2021. Can I have a roll call, please?
Charlie Gonzalez.
Here.
Frank Katz.
Here.
J.J. Gonzalez.
Here.
Libra Lopez.
Here.
Steve Krenz.
Here.
Ria Serna.
Here.
Susan Martin.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, approval of agenda? Any amendments or table to withdraw items, Vicky?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Ria.
Thank you, Ria. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's go to, uh, old business. Uh, A 20-50-80 John Stanton variances. Please, uh, who's gonna present on that?
Mario Madrid, the engineer on the project.
I mean the staff.
Mr. Chair, it's John Lovato. He's having some technical difficulties, so I think he was just trying to call in now. Um, if we can just give him a minute here, he should be on.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I do apologize. We have IT working on trying to get John connected on the computer because he did have some photos that he wanted to bring up, so he won't be able to do that if he's calling in.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I also have some photos that I could share from the visual impact analysis.
Okay, let's, uh, let's let staff make their presentation first and then we can look at that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John.
Sorry about the delay there.
No problem. I should probably make sure that you were around before I started.
All right. Issue: John Stanton applicant, Mario Madrid agent, request of variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.10.4.1 disturbance of 25% slope to allow driveway to access buildable area and disturb 4,842 square feet of 25% slope. A variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.10.1.1 Building area analysis 50/50. A variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.9.2.1 to allow a 3,500 square foot residence in a 319 square foot studio to be constructed on a ridge top. A variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.10.6 Ridge top ridge line setbacks to allow for the main residence and studio to be constructed on the ridge top with no setback. A variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.9.2.7 Significant trees to allow the removal of 11 significant trees to accommodate the driveway and residence. And a variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.4.1 Rock out croppings to allow the removal of one visual rock out cropping. The site is within the residential fringe zoning district. The property is located at 21 Ridge Road via Old Santa Fe Trail within Township 16 North, Range 10 East, Section 21, SDA 2. Summary: On March 18th, 2021, this case was presented to the Santa Fe County Planning Commission. The Planning Commission tabled the case of the applicant provided slope analysis showing the tire site, fire turnaround, structures, and total disturbances on the driveway. The Commission also wanted elevations of proposed structures illustrating the north, south, east, and west elevations on both structures. In addition, the Planning Commission wanted a more detailed visual impact analysis with the 3D rendering of the proposed building imposed on the ridge line. Recommendation: The applicant meets the criteria established in the SLDC for approval of variances and therefore the hearing officer recommends that the application should be approved with the conditions recommended by county staff as stated. Staff recommendation: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay. Uh, approval of agenda? Uh, any amendments or table to withdraw items, Vicky?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion? Or discussion?
This is Frank. I'd move to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay.
This is Rhea.
Thank you, Rhea. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay.
I accept.
Okay. Uh... Let's go to, uh... Old business. Uh... A 20-50-80 John Stanton variances? Please, uh... Who's gonna, uh, present on that?
Mario Madrid, the engineer on the project.
I mean, the staff.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, it's John Lovato. He's having some technical difficulties, so I think he was just trying to call in now. Um... If we can just give him a minute here, he should be on.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I do apologize. We have IT working on, uh, on trying to get John connected on the computer because he did have some photos that he wanted to bring up, so, um, he won't be able to do that if he's calling in.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I also have some photos that I could share from the visual impact analysis.
Okay, let's, uh, let's let staff make their presentation first, and then we can look at that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. It seems like... Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John.
Sorry about the delay there.
No problem. I should probably make sure that you were around before I started.
All right. Issue: John Stanton applicant Mario Madrid agent requests a variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.10.4.1, disturbance of 25% slope to allow driveway to access buildable area and disturb 4,842 square feet of 25% slope. A variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.10.1.1, building area analysis 50/50. A variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.9.2.1, to allow a 3,500 square foot residence and a 319 square foot studio to be constructed on a ridge top. A variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.10.6, ridge top ridge line setbacks, to allow for the main residence and studio to be constructed on the ridge top with no setback. A variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.9.2.7, significant trees, to allow the removal of 11 significant trees to accommodate the driveway and residence. And a variance of Chapter 7, Section 7.17.4.1, rock outcroppings to allow the removal of one visual rock outcropping. The site is within the residential fringe zoning district. The property is located at 21 Ridge Road via Old Santa Fe Trail, within Township 16 North, Range 10 East, Section 21, SDA 2. Summary: On March 18th, 2021, this case was presented to the Santa Fe County Planning Commission. The Planning Commission tabled the case of the applicant provided slope analysis showing the entire site, fire turnaround, structures, and total disturbances on the driveway. The commission also wanted elevations of proposed structures illustrating the north, south, east, and west elevations on both structures. In addition, the Planning Commission wanted a more detailed visual impact analysis with the 3D rendering of the proposed building imposed on the ridge line. Recommendation: The applicant meets the criteria established in the SLDC for approval of variances, and therefore, the hearing officer recommends that the application should be approved with the conditions recommended by county staff as stated. Staff recommendation: In order to construct any residence on the property, a variance request is necessary. This causes peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship on the applicant owner. Based on the proposal minimizing the amount of cuts and fills and disturbance of the terrain and minimizing the visibility of the residence, the spirit of the SLDC is met. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the variances requested, subject to the following conditions. Mr. Chair, can I enter those conditions into the record?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, um, also let you guys know I did a little site visit again just to, uh, get some better visuals on this property. And I have a little presentation I want to, I want you guys to follow along with me on. Um, if Vicky can share the screen for me.
John, you should be able just to click on the bottom on the share button to share content.
All right, I got it.
And then, yeah, you can share whatever's on your screen.
I'm opening this up. All right. Commission members, I just want to kind of get you situated with the bearings of this property. So if you look at this image here, it's called the Stanton, uh, neighborhood property. So you see the green structure with the roof, the pitch roof there. I have my cursor right over it. Um, as I go into the next page, um, just want to give you a little moment to look at that. As I go into the next page, I want to show where this is in reference to the Stanton property. You can see the red roof here, and I have illustrated neighbor's house from previous image. Um, also the Stanton property where this house is going to go. Um... As I go further on down, it's the Stanton residence. You can see the little edge of the, of the residence, the rendering that they did. And then down below to your right-hand side is a neighbor, neighbor green-roofed property or house. Um, down below that, you can see kind of the face of the mountain and all the development that's occurred on this mountain. Um, so, um, I just want to, you know, I know visibility is a concern for the commission. Um, as I go down further, um, this is Mr. Madrid's drawing, and I just want to illustrate on this top corner how it has a north, south, east, and west arrow. Now, this side right here where it's, it's called west-facing slope, that's to the city of Santa Fe and an old Santa Fe Trail and I-25. Um, I want to show that, you know, that the Stanton residence is actually following the contours of this existing hillside or this ridge line. And that is for two reasons: one, to minimize cuts and fills; and two, to meet the height requirements, uh, because if he were to situate this any other way, we'd have stepped levels. Um, I also want to illustrate that there's some rock outcroppings with these blue arrows that are pointing to various rock outcroppings that surround, uh, the Stanton residence in the center here. Further on down, I just wanted to, uh, kind of get some photos for you guys to take a look at to, so you can understand the way this hillside works. Um, that's the whole ridge line in the background with the house in the center is halfway up. Um, the Stanton residence is approximately in this location. So that's from, this is from, uh, old Pequis or old Santa Fe Trail. Further on down, I just wanted to again show the more of the locations where this is, where this is situated. Um, and as we go down, you can kind of get the picture of some of the residents that are on the hillside and another residence. Uh, this is across the way from the Stanton on the opposite ridge top. But adjacent to. Again, there's the, the green structured pitch roof. Um, the Stanton residence is further north on this. And there's another, there's the structure across the way as well. This is a tramway that actually goes up to an existing structure that's up on the hillside. So there's the, the idea is there's a garage down below, a tram that takes you up to the actual site. This is, uh, approximately northwest of the actual Stanton residence. This is below the Stanton residence. There's another house right here. And just some pictures, visuals for you guys to get the idea of the site. Now, the way they've laid it out, this, this would be facing, i-if you were to look out, that would be the city backside here. The way this hillside curves is like this, in a, in a sense where it kind of follows the contour. And the main portion of the house would be actually facing southwest, southeast sort of direction. I think the applicants have illustrated that in their draw sets. Um... This would be actually the dead center of the residence, so you would get this view of more towards the Ortiz Mountains or backside. Cañada de los Alamos is over here to your left. Um, so, um, just some images to orientate you. Again, this is would be the shorter side of the house facing the city of Santa Fe down below. Um, and that would be probably the I-25 corridor and old Santa Fe Trail location. And again, this is that, that side of Cañada, this, the Los Alamos is on this left-hand side here. So I just want to orientate you guys and show you some visuals. Um, hopefully that helps, um, and I stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, John. Does the commission have any questions of John? Or staff? Okay, John, I guess not at this time yet. So, uh, Carl, are, I mean, uh, Mr. Serna, are you gonna make a presentation? Or the applicant? Mr. Madrid, I'm sorry.
We had, uh, done a...
I'm gonna need to swear you in.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us the whole truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mario Madrid, 580 Eliana Road, Santa Cruz, New Mexico.
Thank you very much.
Please proceed.
Okay. Can I share my screen now?
Yes, you may.
See if I, uh, find where I want to go. Okay, are you all able to see my screen?
We can see your screen, just your computer index.
Right.
Okay, you're not seeing the visual impact analysis document?
No, it's not coming out.
Okay, what do I need to do?
Open it up.
I have it open. I'm seeing it.
Hmm.
By getting out, um, maybe, and sharing it again, and just click on the actual, the document itself.
Okay, now I'm lost.
By going up to the top of the screen and hit, um, stop sharing, and then start the process over again and, clicking on the document that you want to show.
Okay, what about now?
Yes.
There's something there. Okay, there's a visual impact analysis that I prepared for, um, for the variances. So you can see this, uh, from my cursor, this is, uh, this, um, tack is, uh, the Stanton, the location of the Stanton, uh, residence, Stanton project. Okay, so somewhere down in here, that little thin little white line is, uh, is Santa Fe Trail. So it, uh, it does this curve around before it connects at, uh, Cañada de los Alamos. So right around there, around one of those corners, is the first photo that I took, number one. And then, um, a little bit further down Santa Fe Trail is, uh, number two, three, four, five, and then not back till, uh, I, I believe that's, um, where the, uh, where they, uh, sell, uh, different, uh, items, number six. Number seven is off of the interstate. Number eight, nine are off of the interstate, and then number 10. Okay, so photo number one, this is photo number one, close to, uh, Cañada de los Alamos. Right where my cursor is, there's, uh, there's the flag at the, it would be the, um, what Mr. Stanton calls the, uh, east wing of the home. This would be the, uh, the southeast corner, right where my cursor is. You can see that flag in the trees.
Are those PVC pipes flagged? Is that what you're using, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they've been at the site, but, uh, they can't stay up on their own. That, that area catches breeze almost all the time. So it's approximately about the same elevation. So this is the, this would be the corner, the apex between the corner at the, of the, uh, east and we, east and, uh, west wings, right there. So this was done, this was done with a professional photographer and a 300-millimeter, um, um, zoom lens. So this is, uh, this is numbered, this is just zoomed in. I believe it's the same location, just, uh, just zoomed in a little bit closer. There's the flag in the tree line, and, uh, and there's the, the apex of the, uh, east and west wings. So location number two. Uh, this is the home a little bit to the, uh, north. Um, flags aren't visible. The, the, the trees are, are, are breaking, are breaking them up. This is location three. And again, they're hard, they're hard to find, but, uh, this is, uh, this would be the, uh, the southwest corner, and this would be the, uh, the apex between the, the west and east wings. I'm not quite sure. I probably had, uh, I was guessing on, uh, elevation with respect to, uh, contours. So it looks like I, I got this, uh, this, uh, corner pole elevation off a little bit. Same, zoomed in a little tighter, same, same location. This is, uh, location four. Location four, nothing was visible. I, I thought that there was possibility for it, but there wasn't. Location number five. This is the, the home, uh, the green pitch roof home, a little bit, uh, below the Stanton's. And we should be seeing flags right about here. I believe there's one in the trees. Zoomed in a little tighter. It's hard to find it. And that's location six. At the, at the vending area. Zoomed in a little tighter. That's the, uh, the home. That's a little bit, uh, below the Stanton's. Location seven. It should be right around here. Most all the homes are, are difficult to spot at that distance. Location eight. There shows where it should be. Down here is the green, green pitch roof down below. Zoomed in a little tighter. That's where I think the flag poles were. When I zoom into the original photo, I can barely see it, but it's a 25 megabyte. That quality of photo is, comes out to become a, a 25-megabyte, uh, file, and I don't have software that can manage a, a file that size. Location nine. There's the green pitch roof down below, and the Stanton residence should be in here somewhere. Hard to, hard to distinguish poles, probably right there. Probably able to see, uh, three corners right there on the south side of the home. Zoomed in a little tighter. There they are. There they are. Location 10, green pitch roof down below, and in there's three poles. This is the house to the, uh, north. Believe I was able to make out one pole in the original photo. That was location 10. There's visibility also from, um, from the, uh, exit at, uh, El Dorado, the opposite side of, to, uh, El Dorado. But, uh, it's, it's far away. You, you can, you get confused as to which ridge you're, you're looking at. And that's all I had unless somebody wanted to take a look at the original photos, which I said are, are 25 megabytes apiece.
Okay, uh, Mr. Madrid, I have a question for you. How did you pick your 10 sites for your photos?
Um, from up at the top at, uh, at the Stanton project, I, I looked down and, and through the, through the trees and such, I could, with binoculars, I could see the road. So I, I knew approximately what locations at the road, the, uh, the project would be visible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do, do any of the other commissioners have any questions?
I do.
Frank, please do.
Yeah, I, I think you submitted in, in this round, uh, some nice photos from the site as to the various directions that I found helpful. Could you show us those?
Um, the, the, the photos from the professional photographer?
The photos from the site that were part of the materials we got this go-round. I don't think we got them last time.
Okay, those are Mr. Stanton's, um, um, development.
Yes, from, from the proposed development.
Those were Mr. Stanton's photos.
Okay, you can't show them to us?
I don't have them, no.
Uh, staff, can you show them to us? Somehow we have them in our material, so you should... We should be able to see them.
Mr. Chair, um, Commissioner Katz, let me see if I can pull those up. It's taking a little while to load. If I can turn the view, if I can turn these. Is there a specific one, um, Commissioner Member Katz, that you wanted to?
I'd like to scroll through all of the views from the property to the different directions, so we can get some sense of... Okay, that, yeah, that's the first one. And you'll, you'll spin it?
I'm not quite sure how to spin that. Let's see. Try this again. Not quite sure how to rotate the view on these.
Are you taking them from? Are you taking them from your, uh, from the exhibits that you sent us, the PDF?
Yes, I'm taking them directly from the website.
Cause there's a place there to spin it.
Sorry, I'm not able to see that icon.
I don't see that icon on the screen either. To rotate, I don't see it.
Yeah. Commissioner Kets, do I have to go back to the, um, to the website in order to do that?
Yes.
Let me see if I can do that.
Well, yeah, I guess so. Yeah. That's where I was able to do it.
Okay, maybe you can walk me through it once I pull that up. Um, I'm not seeing that icon too. John, do you know how to spin this?
I was looking and I, when I opened it up, it opened up correctly, but I, for some reason, it's not opening up on this computer that way.
Does, Mr., maybe Mr. Stanton has, um, video, the photos that he can show us. If he has the actual original photos or he has them saved. I'm, I apologize, I'm just not figuring out how to, how to rotate this.
Is, uh, Mr. Stanton with us?
Yes, 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 yes.
Can you take care of that for us, John?
It's not gonna work.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and mute everyone, um, and then Mr. Stanton, if you can take yourself off of mute, hopefully that'll, alleviate the background noise. So you'll have to unmute yourself, Mr. Stanton.
There we go. Okay.
Mr. Stanton, are you logged on with two different devices? That could be where the feedback is coming from.
Try it again.
Uh, I'm not sure why. I'm not sure why it's sounding like that. I just joined into the meeting, this is the way it came up. The.
Frank, I think you're trying to speak and you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now? Uh, I'm not sure why it's making the, uh, background noise like this.
What I was asking, Mr. Stanton, is do you have the photographs that you took on your computer and can you share those with us?
They're actually on a different computer than what I'm on right now.
That's not very helpful.
No. Let me.
Maybe you can share them, Vicky, and go back to what you were doing and we'll just do side planks and look at it.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Kets, um, let me share those again. Okay, can everyone see that?
Only part of it.
Yeah, they're kind of long for vertical.
Yeah.
I guess, okay, this, this is the west view. And it's pretty clear. Can you mute, Mr. Stanton? Maybe it'll stop the echoing. And if this shows that you do west where is, where the city is and you don't really see much of the city. Next one. This is the south view and you don't see much development, many houses or roads or anything facing do so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kets, if I can interrupt, uh, Vicky, if I can share my screen, I think I rotated them enough to do so.
Thank you, John.
Can you see my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, here's the image, the first image.
No, 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 yeah, I want the views from the house, not of the house.
Okay.
Okay, there's the view to the southwest from the west end. And you see not the city, but you see a fair number of houses, the highway, and then even in the greater distance, a bunch of houses. And this is pretty much southwest, which is pretty much face on. It is, it's just perpendicular to the west facade, which is the longest facade. So it's, this is the, the biggest piece of the house and this is the most visible direction that you're seeing it. Let's go on to the next one if we could. Yeah, this is the west showing that basically if the house were built here, and I think that's the west end that we're seeing. If that was the west side and if that was a long facade, the city wouldn't see it at all. And that's good. Let's go a little further if we might. Then this is, I believe, the south from the middle of the house and very little development, uh, is visible, so it would be visible from very little development. Let's move on. This then is the southeast and this is, again, very little development that you can see, very little development that could see the house. Is there one more? No, that's, oh, view to the east from something that I can't read. Can anyone else read that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kets, it says view from the east uh, end of the house, east from the east end of the house, view from the east of the east end of the house.
Okay, and there's like no visibility on the east. So that the facade that has the greatest visibility that these pictures show for the really, the only facade that has visibility, is the, the facade that is the largest facade. Thank you for showing us those. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, uh, let's see.
Commissioner Gonzalez, I have a, a couple, a quick question.
Sure.
Uh, I was wondering about the re-vegetation plan and the replanting of, um, some of the trees. Um, is there any considerations for using gray water or any plan for drought conditions that would affect being able to, you know, properly water, uh, the new vegetation or new trees?
Can you, can you hear me? Yeah, yeah, this is, uh.
Mr. Stanton, if you're gonna talk, I want to swear you in.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about to give us the whole truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
John Stanton, 1550 Hazelwood Road, Oxville, Tennessee.
Thank you.
The, the plan is to collect the water from the runoff from the roof into cisterns and then that will be pumped out over time to help re, uh, to water the vegetation to grow more trees.
Okay, anything, anything else? Rhea, any, what about questions? Okay, I have a couple, uh, uh, for the engineer, uh, Mario, uh,
Yes.
Uh, how, I am, I'm concerned, how was your, how was the driveway gonna impact, the drainage gonna impact to the existing road?
Okay, there's gonna be, there's gonna need to be a covert crossing, um, right off of a ridge road, ridge drive to, uh, to start the driveway. Okay, shortly after that covert, probably a 12-inch covert is a, is a drop inlet that takes the drainage from the west side of the drive and, uh, and, uh, outlets it to the east side of the drive. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, un- unless we do something more, the way it is now, most of the driveway is gonna, is gonna drain, um, drain down the road and into that covert.
You, you mentioned, you mentioned the drop inlet. Are you, are you guys gonna build one or is there an existing one there?
There's an existing one there, like shortly after, shortly after the drive, there's a, there's a, um, it's not really a drop inlet structure, it's just, uh, shaped with, uh, with rock a little bit before the, uh, before it inlets the, uh, covert.
So it doesn't have a, so it doesn't have a grate on top of it?
No.
I, I guess also on that note, I was noticing on your plans on sheet C103, you're showing some, uh, one-to-one cut slopes and some one-to-one fill slopes. Are you gonna stabilize those?
Yeah, the contractor's gonna have to stabilize them with, uh, with, uh, rock, utilizing rock that, uh, that he gets out of the site to, uh, to help those, um, as far as holding soil on them for, for re-vegetation, it would be difficult.
Yeah, okay, maybe, maybe with madding, but, uh, that's, those are steep slopes. Okay, uh, another question I have is that, uh, I think another question's been coming up, or, or a couple of things come up, is that there is a blue line that it's kind of showing like a, kind of like a, looks like a cul-de-sac or a, or, or old cul-de-sac or a, or a property line or something and, uh, and it, and it shows up on the drawings, uh, do you know what that is?
That's the, that's the current, uh, boundary for, for the Stanton, uh, project. I'm, I'm not familiar with, uh, with what happened, what the necessity was for that change. It was a straight line, but I lea, I believe, um, the way they were, the, the way they cut ridge drive, it, um, there wasn't a offset, there wasn't a proper offset. It encroached the, the, uh, the drive encroached slightly, so they revised the, uh, the, the boundary to, to give some more, uh, property that they had, uh, taken for the drive. So that's why it did that, uh, S curve.
Mr. Chair Commissioner, this is John Lovato. So that is the property boundary and as I look at the survey pla, when I've looked at it, uh, what happened was is the roadway was inadequately laid out within the easement. And so they had to create more easement in order for, and adjust the easement, so that way there was, uh, it was more in tune with the actual roadway. Um, so that's probably what you're seeing there.
Okay, well, that, that, that makes more sense. And, uh, you guys checked the legal law record and that's all to your, to your likings, right?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay, uh, let's see. On a, on one of your, on one of your sheets, you're showing a, a key, under keynote, you're showing a number two and a number four. Number two, you're calling out driveway turnaround. Number four, you're calling out example of fire department turnaround. Can you explain what you're doing there?
Okay, um, when trying to meet the fire department requirements for a turnaround, that's what I've shown on the drawing and if you follow the line work, it is huge. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't fit. That's what I'm trying to convey is that the, the fire department requirement for a turnaround doesn't, uh, doesn't fit. I mean, it would require, I guess I, I could make it fit, but it would be with massive retaining walls and just a lot of creativity to make it fit. So that's what I was trying to convey. So, um, what the fire department, um, um, wanted for the site or what was willing to accept is the 14-foot width and considering that it's, um, it's in the 150-foot, uh, length, vicinity of 150 foot, they were okay with it just, um, with the, with a smaller turnaround. They would, I guess they would, uh, drive, drive up the drive and back out the drive.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. Another question, um, have, have you figured out the type of your fa, your foundation? You're gonna, are you gonna, are you guys gonna have to hammer for it? Meaning you guys can't blast up there? Have you figured that out?
Um, no, that, that is a contractor function, um. There, in some places, there seems like there, there's, um, anywhere in the vicinity of, uh, 12 to 18 inches of soil, but yeah, he's gonna hit rock. He has some experience. It's, uh, Keegan Clay with Clay Custom Homes, so he has some experience with, uh, with getting through rock.
So you're probably talking, you're probably talking about a track, a track hole with a hammer on it, right?
Something like a hammer and chisel of some sort and, um, and no, he's not planning on blasting.
Yeah, right, that's not, it's not allowed anymore. It used to be at one time. Okay, uh, another question I have is on sheet C-106. You're showing your, uh, you're showing your house plan and profile and I'm just kind of confused because you're showing your stationing on the plan going from left to right or, or large to small. However, on the, on the profi, on the profile station, you're showing that from left to right or small to large. Is, is, is that a drafting error or is that what you intended on doing?
Um, tell me again which, uh, sheet that was?
That was sheet, uh, C-106.
What is it in our materials?
Yes, yes.
What page?
Uh, I, I just wrote down C-106. I didn't, I didn't write the exhibit number.
Not looking at it.
C106, uh, on a grading plan?
Yeah, it's your, it's your, you're showing the plan and profile, your house grading plan and profile? And you're showing, you're showing your.
Okay, I have it. Okay, I have it, um. The stationing is, uh, is from, uh, is from right to left?
Right, usually, you know, uh, it's, it's, it isn't sitting up.
Yeah, it's right, it's, it's, it's right to left, but the profile, the profile is, uh, is, uh, is, uh, is flipped, but it's still, it's still conveying, um, the right stationing. In other words, 20, 20 in the plan view is still 20 on the, on the profile. To get, you, you'd be, you'd be looking, you'd be looking at, at the north. You'd be, you'd be positioned at the north, looking at, looking south. And that's the profile that the house would have.
Okay, there you have it. There's Vicky sharing it there.
It's, it's essentially the north side of the home, the, the, the cut that's, that's taking place.
So which one is it? The house is flipped or, 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 or the other one's opposite?
I guess, I, I understand, I understand your question. It's just that, to me, it made sense keeping it this way, running the stationing in the plan view the way I did and, and the profile this way. Because to me, I'm positioned at the north side of the home, looking south at it, and the profile is reading left to right.
Okay. Hey, well, you're building it as long as you can understand the plans.
On, on a road, on a roadway, the, the way I had done it with the driveway, it was, it was the way you're, you're suggesting and, and I, I, I did it that way. But I had to flip, I had to rotate the plan view to get it to work right. And I think that caused some confusion. So I, I just basically kept the north arrow the same on this, on this plan view and, and did the stationing so it would read left to right as if I was looking south.
Okay, I just wanted to get an explanation on that. Okay, and, and the elevation of 8130 finished floor is going to be for the entire structure, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up for questions. Does anybody have any questions on this case or against it? Please speak up.
Mr. Chair, I gave everybody the ability to unmute themselves. So don't need to do that before they speak. And anyone who's on the phone will have to press star six in order to unmute themselves.
Okay. Anybody out there want to speak? Please come forward. Anybody there?
Mr. Chair, could I add, add something?
Sure.
From the engineering perspective?
Sure.
Um, what I've shown on the drawing is, is surface water retention ponds. And the more I think about it, the, the more it's going to be harder to retain water on that slope. The more, the more dangerous it's going to be to try to retain water on that slope. And it's going to be a hu, a huge burden on, on the owner and the contractor to try to build, build that retaining edge of the pond heavy enough to, and it's probably going to have to be lined so that there's no infiltration that can, that can start to erode that bank. So what I'm, I, I, I think the owner, Mr. Stanton, is, is on board with, with my line of thinking is that we'd rather put the, the roof drainage into a cistern. And I'm just thinking that perhaps the 100-year storm is, is a little, a little unrealistic. Like maybe we can keep some retention ponds for that drainage. But I, I think the more important thing is, is to try to capture the, the 10-year volume, to, to put the 10-year volume into a cistern.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, John Lovato, Development Services, I don't, I don't think that's going to work. We, we have design standards to design for 100-year storm event. Pre- and post-drainage calculations cannot change from any standpoint. So that would be a variance request if he were to do something as such, or he does design as such. So we might have to bring this back forward if he's not in agreement with one of the conditions, which is to be condition number, bear with me a moment. Which is for inadequate grading and drainage plan. It is, it's noted in condition number four that the applicant should submit a grading and drainage plan at the time of development permitting. So part of that would be that he has to meet the standards of the San Jose Sustainable Land Development Code, in particular that section with, with drainage.
Yes, and I believe I have.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just thinking there's, there's a better way.
So what you want to do, Madio, is meet with Steph at the time of your building permit and go over your calcs and your volumes and so forth. But keep in mind, if you're going to try and change that, you don't want to come before the, for another variance. So you want to try and work with them as much as you can through the permit process.
Okay.
On that, on that. Okay?
That's all.
Okay, uh, again, this is, it's open to the public. Any questions, comments from the public? I don't see anything else, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion or what's a pleasure of the commission?
I have some discussion, Mr. Chair.
Frank, please do.
I would like to compliment the engineer and the owner and the applicant for shoehorning this house into a very difficult site. And I, I guess there are a bunch of variances being asked for. I'm, I'm not really concerned about the outcroppings. I think you, I think that's going to be necessary in the trees, likewise in the driveway steepness. The ridge top is the part that concerns me the most, the visibility, which is why I ask that we look at the pictures to show what you're looking at from the site and therefore what's looking at the site. And it's, it's a bit of a puzzlement. John, if you could show us page 76 of the materials, that would help us be able to see what, what I'm talking about.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I should remember, Cat, just give me one moment so I can get that material up right.
Appreciate it. I mean, on some levels, what, what I'm talking about is sort of perhaps a hierarchy of, of what's important. You know, trees are important, rock acc, croppings are important, all of that. I appreciate that. But my sense is that the visibility is, is the hardest part. Okay, there you go. And so that shows that first picture, well, you, you were showing what I wanted to focus. Yeah, that's, that's the southwest view. That's where the most development looks at the house. See if you could go back to page 76 again. Okay, there you go. If you're standing where number two is and looking up at the house, you just see the whole long facade of the house. You see the west wing and you see the east wing both. You see the whole long sweep of it. And that may be what has to happen. But my concern is if you can scroll up one page. Okay, there we go. And what you have is you have the house there facing as you see. And there are a couple of places where there's a little bit of the, oh, I'm not really good on colors. Orange-red, that's where the house is and a little bit of the yellow-green. I don't know. I'm, I'm colorblind, so I can't really tell. But most of it's in the gray area, which is less than a 25% slope. And if you took the house and swiveled it essentially 90 degrees and slid it where you have the open space, and I think that the, they talked about that. If you use the northwest axis instead of, the north-south axis instead of the east-west axis, there is space where you would have no greater disturbance of steep slope. But the long side of the house would not be facing the southwest, but would be facing largely east and west and not visible to most anyone. The, what is the, on what you see here in the, in the drawing, where the house is, the west end of the house, that's a very short end. That would be getting that view. In order to do that, you would probably have to make it a two-story house. Although the, because you can see to the north in that area, there's an area where the lines are further apart. So there's a sort of a flatness up there. And at the bottom of that north-south axis, again, there's space where the lines are further apart. But there would have to be excavation and probably what would be the south end of the house could be at grade, but the north end would be dug in probably, and I would think with a second floor. I don't know. That's a way of doing it so it's not visible. It sort of depends what's most important. And I don't know how other people feel. I'm not sure entirely how I feel. But I would like some discussion on that the longest facade, I mean, the, the, the whole face of the house is visible in the one direction that you really see it, the southwest.
May I say something? This is, this is the owner. My original plan was a square house that would have been two.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. I think I muted Mr. Stanton trying to, trying to alleviate the feedback.
Okay, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The original plan I came up with two years ago was a square house, two stories. And it would have dug into that one small area there. The problem is that you're not allowed to build a two-story house at that elevation on a ridge.
It would require an exception. And in fact, you might not have to do a two-story house. You might have the southern part of it lower and then stairs up to a ungrade, but up to a higher level.
The, the other issue is, my wife just had a knee replacement and is 66 years old and is very uninterested in a two-story house. She's kind of limited in her, in her mobility.
I think what you have done in the design you have is very admirable. I love the fact that it's on one story. I'm a little bit older, okay, a lot older than your wife, and I am appreciating a house with no steps. Wish I had one. I mean, what you designed here is the minimal disturbance, I think. It's one story. I think there, there are many virtues to it. I don't know. I mean, I'm curious to hear from the other members of the board. And if, if they're satisfied, I will not pursue further various ways that it could work out to not have it so visible. I mean, a square house, you're going to have a long facade visible. You have a narrow house. And if the narrow house was swiveled 90 degrees counterclockwise, the visible side would be very small, whether it was a southern end of it ungrade and then a northern end of it a little higher. That would be the short end. But can, can I hear from the other members of the commission?
Mr. Chair.
JJ.
Yes. I, I agree with Frank on that. I personally would like to see a smaller house. I'm not in, not a fan of building on steep slopes. I mean, overlook is a very steep area. And I, I think that they could put in a smaller house. I don't know how many people are going to reside there. But I assume it's going to be Mr. Stanton and his wife. And then they want to build an accessory, building a studio. And I'm concerned about, you know, having a turnaround for the fire department, I think is going to be challenging for the fire apparatus and also a liquid waste disposal system. Those, those are things that go and take a lot of space. And that would be much more of disturbance. So I kind of agree with Mr. Katz and I'll listen to other members, see what they think. Thank you.
Okay, anybody, any other members?
Mr. Chair, I would also like to add my comment.
Please do.
I, I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez. When this originally became, came before the commission, I also questioned why this couldn't be a smaller house. And I know that the applicant's agent at one point stated that the owner should be allowed to construct his dream home. And if he can't do his dream home, then he shouldn't, then, you know, then it wasn't fair basically for the owner. But I'm also in agreement that, you know, given how difficult this site is to develop and really the lack of developable area and also with regards to, you know, the fire department and the turnaround, you know, and drought issues, you know, that are going to continuing to be face, facing, you know, us and across the west. You know, this could be an area that would be susceptible for, you know, possible forest fires. So anyway, I also just wanted to express my concern and also my agreement with Commissioner Gonzalez that, you know, why can't this be a smaller house?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chairman. In regards to, to moving, rotating the home, the, the first design that I got from Mr. Stanton, I, I was trying to, to, to fit it into, into slopes of 30% or less. And I had to tweak the east wing and west wing and the angle to get it to fit just right. So when, part of the SLDC requirements is a 14-foot height requirement to the top of the roof from existing ground. So that southwest, southwest corner, that's the one that comes into question very much. It, I, I'm not sure what contour it's on, but I, the roof line has to stay 14, below 14 feet. So you start, when you start moving, moving these, these, these edges of the home, perimeter of the home to, to different contours, it, it may not, it may not fit. The other thing is, is that I wasn't made aware of this, but Mr. Lovato stated that the area was subdivided in 1973. So these other people in the neighborhood, they've built their homes to, to a certain size. And I'm not sure, I don't think Mr. Stanton's home is, is any bigger than anybody else's home over there. But there, there was one, homeowners had questions that we addressed. And the big, the biggest one was, was drainage. They, they weren't concerned about the size of his home. That was all I had. Thank you, Commissioner.
And any other commissioners? Okay, I, I, I have a, and I'll speak. I, I've been, in my career, I've do this. This is what I inspect the city and the county over the years, and I've seen a lot of these things. I've always liked to see, I like to see a lot of disturbance of steep slopes as well, especially for septic or houses. But there, there is ways of getting things done. And you can see that these guys did try to build, going with the contours, what they're proposing. However, the size of the house, one thing that I can say as far as visibility is that there's a lot of houses out there where, where, where after they were built were, were visible and they had to be screened after the fact with trees. So another way of, of screening things is that after the structure is built, you can add trees afterwards to help screen it. When I was working at the county, I I did have that issue with. An actress on top of the over at a by Wilderness Gate area and she cut in a driveway. Without a permit and part of her penalty was to was for to come back and add additional trees to screen the driveway cut. That that was a. It happened a few years ago, so there is options out there to do this, but I just thought I'd throw that out there where. Where there is ways to to hide a house after it's been built as well.
One one more thing. Mister Chairman. Is. I today before the meeting, just to see how what percent slope. These these thirty percent overs would disappear at and. There's, I believe there's a little encroachment. There's there's slightly encroached areas, but they disappear after thirty five percent.
Could you repeat that again?
Okay, when I redo the analysis, instead of using the limit of of. Thirty percent, I redo the analysis at thirty five percent. And all those all those red slopes of anything over thirty percent thirty five percent go away.
So so why are you are you saying that you're doing it in bigger contours and the slopes disappear? Is that what you're saying?
And no, I'm just saying how close. How close the the thirty percent. Limit is for some of these smaller smaller areas that the home is on.
I see what you're saying, okay. Right, okay. Okay, any other?
Thank you.
Yep. May I make a comment?
Okay, let me let me finish, does staff anymore, does a commission have any more comments? Discussion? Okay, John, go ahead.
Okay. This house looks like it's a long house and a narrow house because it is. I tried to follow the contours and limit how much we cut into the soil. There has, it's a three bedroom house, it has room for myself, I mean, for my wife and I and our two sons. To come and visit and spend time with this house. So it has two guest rooms, living room, a bedroom for us and a kitchen area. Doesn't even have a dining room in there. Why the house, as I said, I would have preferred a more square house. I'm not real excited about having a long house myself, but it's the only way I could accommodate the house to the contours. And try to maintain as much as I could the requirements of not building over fourteen feet high. Not having two stories for my wife who has knee problems. And trying to allow my children to come and visit us out there in our house while we're while we're living out there. I don't want to have to put them in a motel. So they they can come and stay with us. The. You know, it's it's difficult to design a house by committee and it sounds like what you guys are saying is. Well, make your house smaller, don't worry about guests. Make it square, go ahead and build it on it. Where it has steps in it, which is inconvenient for my wife. I don't know, we've had this house, this land since two thousand and seven. I've been trying to get something built on there for the last three years since two thousand and eighteen at this point. And I've redesigned the house four times, try to accommodate all the rules and requirements. And it's only visible from the southwest from the highway, which is four and a half miles away. It's not on a ridge top, it's just on a ridge, there are houses above my house and houses below my house that are considerably larger. So it's it's going to be very onerous for me to try to to redesign this entire house. And eliminate my family from being able to come and visit us or or make it difficult for my wife. My wife who is having difficulty going up and down stairs in the house we are currently living in. That's all.
Thank you, John. Okay. What is a pleasure of the commission?
Mister Chair, there are a couple of things I would point out. If the house were on two levels, certainly the portion that the Stanton's mostly live on, the living room. The kitchen, the master bedroom suite could all be on one level. And on the second level could be space for those other two bedrooms for those young sons. Or there could be a guest house that would be a separate building that would obviate the problem. Of the the height such. So I think there are other ways, I don't think that, but. I I mean, I recognize the virtue of the design that Mister Stanton has done. I just, you know, leave it to the the board to figure out what the commission to figure out what they want to do.
One one more quick comment, the requirements of the neighborhood do not allow me to have two separate houses or structures. Other than a small art studio. On that property, I'm not allowed to have two two houses or two a guest house on that property based on our neighborhood requirements.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion? By the commissioners? Discussion or a motion? Anybody there? Let's see here.
Mister Chair.
JJ.
Yes, I would move to approve a case number twenty dash fifty eighty with conditions.
Uh JJ, would you take a friendly amendment on that?
Yes, I would.
I would like to add an amendment that additional trees may be required for additional screening if if the structure is highly visible from the public roadway.
That would be good, I agree with that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, a friendly with a friendly motion, do we have a sec a second? Okay, any other motions, discussion?
Motion dies with for lack of approval.
Yes, motion dies for lack of approval. Any other motions, discussion? Frank, anything?
My curiosity is where the rest of the commission is. Do I don't hear that they didn't like JJ's motion. What are their concerns? Are there changes they want or what's going on?
Ray, Susan, you have anything to say?
Mister Chair.
JJ.
I have a comment, you know, my motion was based on Mister John Lovato's excellent presentation, you know, he did he did a lot of work. He did excellent photos. He went above and beyond, I think, what they've ever done for projects that come before us for variances. So Mister John Lovato did a did a remarkable job on presenting this case. And that's the my only comment, that's why I made the motion for approval. But thank you.
And I agree on that a hundred percent.
I also agree he did a great job, but. That's not a basis for deciding whether this size house should be built.
Yeah.
Or this, you know, I I recognize the virtues of what Mister Stanton has done, but I. This is just maybe not the site for them.
Is the county willing to purchase my property then at the price I paid for it if I can't build on it?
Mister Chair, I don't think that's a proper comment from the applicant.
Yeah.
I've had this land for fifteen for since two thousand and seven, fifteen years, fourteen years.
Our discussion is about a motion. Comment is not accepted, thank you.
Let's continue our discussion. I'm kind of lost for words on here now, what do what do we do next here?
Mister Chair, this I I'd like to second JJ's motion with conditions. And and here and here discussion, further discussion.
The Susan, does that include my friendly amendment?
Yes, yes, including your.
Chair, I think you might a new motion might be in order.
Sorry, yes, JJ, would you like to repeat your motion?
Yes, well, before I repeat my motion, I would just like to say if. This. Case is denied, the applicant can also appeal it to the Board of County Commissioners, so it's not like it's. It's denied forever, I think there's an appeal process, but I will make the motion again. To approve case twenty dash fifty eighty with conditions and the friendly amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Susan?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, can I get a roll call vote?
Mister Gonzalez, Charlie Gonzalez.
Yes.
Frank Katz.
Pass.
JJ Gonzalez.
Yes.
Libra Lopez.
Yes.
Susan Martin.
Yes.
Reyes Serna.
Yes.
Mister Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you all very much, and again, John and staff, you did a great job and thank you all. Okay, let's. Let's continue. Okay. Communications from the county, no, I'm sorry. I lost my other sheet here. Okay, so that takes us to B, possible action on findings of facts and. Conclusions for case twenty dash fifty eighty. Correct, Vicki?
Um, yes, Mister Chair. Since there was an amendment made to the conditions, I don't know, I would defer to to our attorney Prisino to see if we can take action on that. And just make that change or if we need to develop a new final order to come back next month.
Yes, sir, could you give us some direction there?
Roger, I think you're on mute.
Can't hear you, Roger.
For what it's worth, I have no issue with planting more trees. We we love trees and I'll plant as many as we need to.
Not sure, it looks like he's unmuted, but we're not hearing Attorney Prisino.
I think he's trying to call you, Vicki.
Okay, maybe he's trying to call into the meeting?
Or calling, yeah, you were to the meeting.
Can't we just verbally add a can add the condition that you wish to add, Charlie?
That's what I thought.
Fine with me.
Mister Chair, can the attorney add his comments into the chat since we can't hear him?
Let's see what he's doing here. I don't see anything coming through yet, do you, Vicki?
I don't, Mister Chair, let me. Put the call in info up on the screen so that Mister so that Roger can. And have that information to call in if he needs it. See if it's going to let me do this. Here's the call in number. And I'll scroll up to the access code here.
I don't see anything coming through.
Is there some reason where we can't just put this over till next month and do the findings then, since we can't seem to get it done now?
I'd be fine with that.
That's fine if the commission would like to table that item, we can bring it back next month with the correction.
Do we need to make a formal table? A motion for a table?
Yes, I believe you do, Mister Chair.
Okay. Frank, do you want to make that?
Yeah, I'd move to table till next month so we can. Get it done right.
Okay, so there's a motion to table B, possible action of findings of facts and conclusions for case twenty dash fifty eighty.
Mister Chair, I would second that motion.
Okay. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Frank Katz.
Yes.
JJ Gonzalez.
Yes.
Libra Lopez.
Yes.
Susan Martin.
Aye.
Reyes Serna.
Yes.
Motion classes.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to the next item, thank you all for attending and again, thank you staff, thank you for the applicant. Petitions from the floor, any petitions from the floor? Nope. Communications from commission members, any communication from commission members? Okay. Put communication from the county attorney. Roger, try us again. I can I can see you moving. Thank you. Okay. Matters from the land use staff?
Mister Chair, I just wanted to give you an update in regards to the Gerald Olson variance off of Coyote Mountain Road. This was the. This was the case that you heard, I believe it was back in February, and there was a great deal of opposition from the Coyote Mountain community, which included Mr. Truhun. And that case did go on an appeal to the county commission last week, I believe. And the decision of the county commission was to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decisions to grant the variances.
Oh, cool. Thank you. Did he use his NASA surveying?
He did, he did, and he showed some slides that he had put together. So, yeah, he did.
Thank you. Okay, the next scheduled planning commission meeting is June 17, 2021. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right. Thank you all. Nice seeing you again. Thank you for attending. See you all later. Have a good month. Bye-bye.